We don't give our assignments.
The Girl Scout group is going to back.
I need too many ladies here.
Let me see if I can introduce the agenda for tonight. First thing we'll do is I'm going to ask for... In fact, there are some copies. Yeah, but the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to ask for any amendments to the agenda from the board or anybody else, so that there's something I forgot. Because as a supervisor, I put together the agenda of things that I think we need to talk about. Then it's privilege of the floor, so anybody can talk about anything that's on the agenda. Then we're going to have reports from the board members of things that are significant that they've been working with. And each of the board members have assignments. Commissioner Kleats, Commissioner Department of Public Works, Commissioner Deals of Joint Recreation, and then Water and Sewer Commissioners. Then we break up our business into what they call old business, and that's things we had talked about in the past. And then new business, and that's brand-new things that are brand-new to the board, that they haven't seen before. We then talk about finances and the amount of money that we spend, and I ask for permission from the board to spend that money. And then finally, we have a privilege of the floor, which anybody can talk about anything that they'd like to talk about. So if you want to put your hand up and say, "I want to talk about contributions to the Boy Scout troop." We can give you a microphone, you say your name and where you live, and what did you like. And then we adjourn. And after we adjourn from the regular meeting, then we go to what they call executive session, which is private. And we talk basically three things. Things that we negotiate, so you don't want to give away all your postures on things. We talk about litigation, where someone's suing us, or... I don't remember where we've ever sued anybody, but where somebody's suing us, we talk about that. Personnel cases, where we have names, and you don't want the names in the paper, or somebody's mad at somebody, or something's not going well. So things that we'd like to keep in private, we put in executive session. And then we adjourn and we go home. We wait, we do it again, two more weeks. So with that...
Sure, please. Just one other thing, you'll notice, it depends on the evening, but you'll notice here tonight, that this board has to work as an entire board. It's not one person, the supervisor, or something like that. So what you'll see is resolutions, things that have to be passed. But a resolution has to get a first, and it has to be seconded, and then it's on the floor for discussion, and then we vote on it, all of us vote together. So you'll see that tonight. I think we have one or two things that we have to vote on. But in order even to vote on it, there has to be a first and a second. That's the procedure that we follow at village boards, as well as town boards. Then school boards, same type of thing, that's the way things operate.
Good, thank you, George. George was the village mayor for what, 17 years, 16 years?
I was on the village board for 18 years, eight of which were my last.
There you go. So if I get in trouble, I just...
I know about that.
The... In a tent, there's five of us. There's only one difference between myself and the other board members. I have the privilege of putting together the agenda, but where each one of us has one vote. So we have the same power as our legislative body to vote on things. Okay, so privilege of the floor, does anybody have anything they'd like to say relative to the... Well, first of all, is there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, privilege of the floor, does anybody want to say anything about what's on the agenda? Neil?
I'll say something to the scouts. Most of these meetings are online, at Gosha New York dot info. So you can watch them at home, or at your scout hall, or wherever it is that you might be. And actually, you guys should be doing this, I shouldn't be here. So if there's any volunteers, or if you folks decide you want to take this over, it'd be a perfect scouting opportunity, you know? You just need a camera and a computer, and we just upload them to YouTube, and then link them to a website.
So point the camera at them, so when they look at this meeting, they'll be able to see themselves.
I've got them.
Okay, you got them, you got them, don't you? It's not a matter of record now, so you fall on record.
But sincerely, yeah, you may want to...
I wasn't aware of that, please, uh, thank you.
Yeah, we cover the village board meetings and the town meetings, as many as we're able to. Sometimes we do fire district meetings, we try to do Orange County Legislature. Thing about Gosha is, is you have this conglomeration of all of these different governments. You've got the county here, you've got the town, you've got the village, you've got the 911 center over here. There's just, you know, the cornucopia of governmental things happening. Surrogate Court, you've got the courts, the county courts, town, village, and there's never a shortage of things to cover if you wanted to. And it's a great little springboard, or rehearsal, or practice for filmmaking or television production, if you decide to go into that, and create a portfolio for yourself, you know, and show it off in your CV or your resume. Is that agenda-related enough?
I just have one, two things to say also. We might as well all weigh in and fill you up. In order for a motion to pass, you need a majority of three. Sometimes you'll see us all say aye or nay, and then sometimes on very, very important issues, where you have to be singled out, we will call for a roll call, and each one of us separately will say aye or nay. And the second thing is, you'll notice that we're talking into the microphones. This is all being recorded, and the only way we can record it, so that even a member of the audience will have to speak into the microphone. Our town clerk, Val Eisner, takes notes in minutes, but it is also recorded as a backup. So any meeting that we have, if Neil is not here and is not on tape, will always be recorded. The minutes will always be tight, so we know exactly what went on. So there's a lot of behind-the-scenes that goes on, other than just a meeting and just us talking, so information is...
Good, thank you.
Well, I have one other thing, if I may.
Okay.
We are all elected officials. I have to run every four years and be re-elected. The supervisor here has a two-year term. He has to run and be elected every two years. And even our clerk here is an elected official and has to run, is it four years?
Two years.
No, two years, two years. And we have judges that hopefully you will never see, at least in their official capacity, but they have to, they're elected judges, they have to run, I think it's every four years. And we have a DPW supervisor who has to run every two years.
Yeah, right, good. And there's a test right after this meeting. Okay. Reports. Phil, we'll start with you.
Don't we start with Phil?
No, sometimes we start with Louie.
Okay. I'm the police commissioner, so I'll give a report on the police. The main thing I want to report on, we had a what's called Cinco de Mayo celebration in the town of Gosha. And the Hacienda restaurant on Route 17, usually puts on this gala affair. I would say there were in excess of probably 1,000 people there. Would you say that, Ken?
Yes.
And Ken involved this there. Now, as part of my report, and they won't go into detail, because we're still investigating this, but there were three incidents where arrests were made. And just briefly, the three involved underage individuals. All three were alcohol-related. In one of them, there was a 17-year-old person who injured one of our officers. So we have to figure out, maybe Dennis, what our liability is, because I'm a little worried about that. The second incident, and there was false ID and so on and so forth, so they were on the premises with false identification. The second one, age 18, also was alcohol-related, arrest for disorderly conduct. And the third one, he was age 20, and at that one, Govek had to be called. There was the scuffle, and one of the victims was brought to the hospital. And so those are the three incidents, and we're going to investigate these to see what our liability is and what took place. So that's just my basic report. Otherwise, there are no other unusual incidents in the town of Gosha.
Good, thank you. George?
I am the liaison to the Joint Recreation Commission, and I'm sure some of the people here have been involved with different activities that are sponsored by the Joint Rec. So we meet once a month, and it's a combination of the village and the town of Gosha. So my report is as follows. I sat in for the last two days on the interviews for the director, the health director, and the art director for the day camp. And I guess it's a sign of the economy, because we have a tremendous amount of applicants, and really good applicants. I hope the ones that we actually picked as our first picks wind up taking the job, because they're outstanding candidates. It's ironic that Dennis Lindsay is here tonight, but I'm glad he is, actually. Dennis Lindsay is our engineer, and Dennis Kaplicky is our attorney. Dennis Kaplicky, our attorney, is usually here at every one of our meetings. But why I say that is, I finally have my copy of the RFP for the demolition of the Solition Building. And I gave a copy to Dennis today, and I gave a copy to the supervisor, and I have a copy here. You guys are all welcome to it, but, you know, it's like 25 pages, so if you want a copy, you're welcome to it, you just have to ask Val. So it is here, and now, of course, the next question is, what do we do it? Since we don't have the money to, we want to take down that building, that Solition Park, because it's just gone to seed, so to speak. So we're in the throes of trying to get the money together, I guess, or some combination, as we were talking this afternoon, about maybe some creative thinking about other ways in which we might be able to demo the building. But it's here, and...
How much, what was the bottom line on this?
We don't know.
This is just the RFP.
Right.
And we'd have to send it out now.
Okay, yeah.
So we'd have to send the thing out, and, you know, get the input from the village. As a matter of fact, I think you were in the form of the stages of having some kind of a joint meeting, right? And this would be maybe a discussion item?
Well, yes, I was going to do it at the next work session, but we can do it tonight. Basically, what it is, there's two issues regarding joint recreation, which is joint because we're with the village on this. One is taking down the old Solition School Building, which has got a fence around it, it's what they call an attractive nuisance. Somebody goes in there, they can really get hurt. George has been working with our engineer, who did it free for the town. We owe him a debt of gratitude.
Thank you, Dennis.
And so anyway, we've got this now, and so, but we need a joint meeting with the village to figure out what we're going to do, because it's not an overabundance of money in the village or the town. And the second issue is, there's somebody who's interested in restoring that building with antiquities in it. And so we have to flesh out, is that really true, or can they get the funding to do it, or is it just somebody's dream that they'd like to do that? So there's a need to have a meeting with the joint, with the village. And I got a letter today, or yesterday, from the mayor, saying, "How about sometime in July?" So we'll look at our schedule and have a joint meeting with them, and determine these two subjects and anything else anybody'd like to talk about about that. So go ahead, George.
Okay, I've got a lot of positive comments on the patching work that the town DPW did at Solition, and also the stone that was put out at Craigville Park. We are in the formative stages of formulating a baseball and basketball camp that'll be held at the Gosha Middle School. We are now looking for a member-at-large later in our agenda here. We have the resignation of Trish Sherlock, so just to throw out to the public that there is a opening on the JRC, and if anyone is interested in serving on the JRC, they should write a letter to the supervisor. We really have a good team of people out at the parks now, all experienced adults who are working, these essentially apartheid people who are working second jobs, but we have a good crew out there. And as we were talking about before, Tolu, maybe we'll have one other one, if we can finally get that resolved, and we have a question of rate of pay. And last but not least, which I will talk later in the agenda, is the issue of trying to get some community development funds for low-income income people, so that they can attend the camp. That's it.
Okay. We're going to skip around, Ken. We'll go to Ken's setup, another setup.
Just, I'm water commissioner and all building the grounds here in town hall. I share the water commission with Supervisor Beanfield, so we work together, making sure the sewer plants and all related problems are addressed and solved as quickly as possible. Fortunately, this month, I don't have much to report on that. I just want to remind, for the record, Monday night, we passed a resolution to, we look up these grills up here on the ceiling, they're all going to be vacuum cleaned, they haven't done that in a number of years, and we're looking for funding for a pot, for a run through the supervisor's office, and the town clerks, they're, and these are brand-new, as you can see, we're looking to replace them bit by bit, so other than that, they're happy to put no major problems in water and sewer. So I guess we'll shut up.
No, let's start back with me here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to lead into something you could talk about.
It's my, our order, I forget.
On Tuesday, we had the assessment board review, and this is a, made up, this board is made up of citizens who volunteered to work on it. They are paid minimally. And what it is, once a year, we have this assessment board review, and if people want to challenge their assessment on their home property, which is taxed, that's the place to take it. And so this year, we had 268 people grieving their assessment. Last year, we had 267, so we have one more this year than last year. And I guess we're just doing like we've always done. And they'll get the answer, they met on two different occasions, on Tuesday, in the afternoon and the evening, and by the 1st of July, I think it is, they get an answer back, whether it's going to be some movement up, or, you know, I mean, I'm sorry, movement down, or the same on their assessment. On Monday of this past week, I had the privilege of talking to the Department of Public Works and the sewer and water employees. The board, I had written a letter, they agreed with it, and we were thanking the people on these two groups, Department of Public Works, taking care of the roads, and the water and sewer employees. Because during 2011, there were four totally unexpected situations that happened with Mother Nature. The first one is, we had a tornado that hit out on Ridge Road. Did a lot of bad damage. It came late in the afternoon. The other thing is, knocked out the power to the sewer plant. And when the power to the sewer plant goes out, the pumps don't work, and the sewage and the collection pit increases, and you don't want it to overflow and get into the lowlands, into the swamps, or anywhere for that matter. So they responded quickly and did their thing, and we averted the catastrophe. The next one is, we had Hurricane Irene. And I'm sure you were here, you saw downtown, the villagers flooded, it flooded everywhere. And culverts and things were washed out. They responded, they went and repaired culverts and whatnot, road washouts. Just as soon as they kind of got a temporary fix on these, we had a week later, I mean, tropical storm Lee. And the same thing happened, everything we just fixed, walked back out again. And then, of course, you remember on Halloween, and we had that freak snowstorm, and it took down power lines and so forth and so on. So all this lack of power interrupted sewer services, which are vital. The other thing is, it washed out culverts, and the concern there was, if we change the flow of the water from where it normally goes through ditches and things, it could go out in farmland or wherever and wash, it first of all gets muddy, muddy water, and it can get pesticides, herbicides, fungicides, fertilizers, or whatever, contamination, find its way to the rivers, the creeks, et cetera, and contaminator drinking water. So I read and gave each employee a certificate, or actually a letter of congratulations and commendation for what they had done. Then this past week, there's another thing that Lou is going to talk about, the Orange County Water Authority held a meeting, it's called Earth and Water Day, it was out at the Orange County Park. With that, I'm going to turn this, I don't have the evidence from my report, I'm going to turn it over to Lou, and he can talk about what happened there.
Just so you know, I'm Commissioner of Highway, I'm Commissioner of Dial-a-Bus, and I'm also Commissioner of the Senior Center. So normally every month, I report on those three aspects. This month, I don't have as much as I normally have, but before we get into what Doug was talking about, I just want the public to know that the cleanup is completed, and if you want to make a comparison, this year, the tonnage of stuff that we took out was a little bit more than previous year's stuff. But it went a lot quicker because of the fact that, like I said at our last meeting, Florida was nice enough to lend us one of their garbage trucks that compacts, and they hold around six to eight tons of debris that is squashed, where our dump trucks might hold a ton and a half, so we were able to do the job a lot faster. And again, I want to compliment and thank you, and plus, they gave us an operator. So thanks to Florida again for that, because we do try to work together. The other thing that happened this past week is that Riddick Associates, which where Dennis comes from, one of his employees there is working with our Highway Department, we're going out to get a survey on Hartley Road to, because we got FEMA money there of about the nature of $297,000, and we're going to be going out there to survey what has to be done, and then probably go out to bid and a bunch of other things. And hopefully, we'll complete this sometime this year, if not the beginning of next year. So that's in the works also. And it's a good thing, because that's money you do not want to pass up. As far as what Doug was talking about, the town giving our employees from Highway and Sewer Department a citation, a certificate, a citation for thanks for the well job they did during those four particular storms. We were, this past weekend, our Highway Superintendent went out there, I think Mark might have went out there too, for our water and sewer department. Again, it was Earth and Water Day, sponsored by the Orange County Park, it was at Orange County Park, sponsored by the Water Authority. Nan Hayward, who is our Congresswoman in the federal government, and our representative, was nice enough to award again our Highway and Sewer Department citations, a gratitude. So my hats off to the Water and Sewer Department and Highway Department. As far as, I don't have anything on the Senior Center, we didn't have a meeting this month, but as far as Dial-a-Bus, just to let you know, back in April 9th, we did a modification to our schedule and so forth, we went from two buses to one bus, but basically, we're in the 60s, somewhere, hours a week operation. Everything's going well. The only thing I want to put in my report is the fact that the people need to have a little consideration when they cancel, because they're canceling like 15 minutes before their scheduled pickup, and because we're working twice as hard to get the same amount of output with passengers, it doesn't allow us to reschedule and get somebody else that might have been turned down. So I just want to add that, if we could all work together, this could be done very well. And that's about all I have, Doug.
Good, thank you very much. Okay, under old business, Dennis, Kaplicky, you want to lead off? We have this whole, basically what this is, folks, is continue discussion on the following information regarding the New York Farm LLC subsidy, irrevocable offer of dedication for parcel B, turnover agreement, greater way abandonment agreement, declaration of open space for conservation easement, permanent easement for stormwater retention ponds, bargain and sale agreement, or D, rows A and B, New York Farms. So with that, Dennis, you want to lead us through where we're at on this?
Yeah, presently, as the board's aware, you have a number of these documents, albeit not in final form. But tonight, what you have before you is a memo and a modified turnover agreement, which is probably one of the most important documents in the project package from your perspective. And village, yeah, town engineer, Dennis Lindsay, is here tonight to go over with the board the results of his meeting with the principals of Heritage NY Farms, wherein the turnover agreement was further modified. And if you look at the package that he provided to you, it was in your envelopes, if you will, there's a two-page memo and a seven-page, give or take, turnover agreement, which has been red and blue lined. The, as I recall, the red line material is material which Dennis has further modified. The blue line material is the amendments which I had made together with Jim Sweeney, and we had previously discussed those. So what you really need to concentrate on tonight with Dennis, our engineer, is the modified blue language, which should address all of your concerns and the issues that were raised in connection with the turnover.
Are they all black? Ours are all black, so the thing is crossed out.
Dennis has got a very colorful, nice one.
I know.
The blue is telling you.
The red is...
I apologize.
It's okay, I read the red one. Pretty in forehand.
It's very pretty. Also substitute.
I'm the big buck guy.
That's why he gets the big buck.
In a green, in a green...
Red, blue.
Someone might, Dennis, you'll need a mic there.
So I'm going to let Dennis address those issues now, because the board needs to be educated in regard to those, and the applicants here receiving also, a further colloquy on this case.
Dennis, I wrote it right out. I gave you a two-page memo, which kind of bullets and highlights for talking purposes what's in the document. That's probably easier to go over than the 12-page document, which has quite a bit of language in there. Yes, you have met with the developer, this was a follow-up to public hearings that you had with the Ham Park residents, and where you discussed all of the benefits to the Ham Park and to the developer, and what might happen in terms of a combining of the districts, if you will, taking Heritage and making it part of Hamiltonian's district. And after those hearings, you decided that would be an appropriate way to go, and now this is the mechanism so that it can happen. You met with them last time, and there were a number of outstanding issues that had not been resolved, and you asked if I would meet with them and discuss those technical issues and make a recommendation to you, and that's basically what this is. What we did is, we looked at the infrastructure requirements for water system and for the sewer system, and we tried to look at avenues where we could provide our principal requirement, which was that this is an efficient development right from the very beginning, that the connection provides a good water supply both for Hamiltonian and for Heritage, that they're provided with domestic supply, that they're provided with fire protection, that the sanitary sewer system is complete and operational. We looked at what we might be able to do in terms of economies for the developer and still meet those goals. Quite frankly, there weren't. Basically, after much discussion, we tried to work out something where I might be able to help them, but in every instance, I thought we would be compromising the system, and I told them that, and I told them why. And quite frankly, they manned up and they understood what we were saying, although they wanted to make economies, they realized that those things have to go away. wanted to make economies, they realized that those things have to go away. And so, basically, what it came down to is we do need everything that we had in there, and we need it from the first C.O., basically. Now, there is a phase development, they're building portions of the development phases. That's okay, they can, the phase is not being built, that infrastructure can be built later, but the phase that is constructed, and the first phase requires the full water supply in terms of wells, it requires a connection to the Hamiltonian district so that they have fire protection from the storage tank, um, that's on, and the distribution system in the phase that's being developed. As far as the sanitary sewer system, they need the pump station, they need the, uh, everything that goes to the pump station, the backup supply, the duplicate pumps, all of that, they need the collection system, and they need the force main connecting to the village's system. So with that in mind, then we went on to the mechanism to see that this would work. Um, and that's, that's the infrastructure that has to be built, but when they build a house, they build the first house, then you, and my recommendation to you is that you operate the system from day one. It's been my experience in the past, when developers operate the system, no offense, that, um, it's not a, it may not be a qualified operator, or it may be someone from the staff that does it out there in the field, you're gonna be responsible for the pump stations, for the wells, and for the infrastructure going on forward after the developer's done. Uh, I think it's in your interest to have your operators there from day one operating it. It's not ready for a turnover to you, so what I, we structured this so that there'll be acceptance for operations. That means that basically we, they get to a point, we take a look at the system, the Water Superintendent, the Sewer Superintendent, and myself, or the Town Engineer, would look at it and would say that, yes, it's ready for operation. We would tell you that, and at that time, uh, we would ask them to do a number of things. One is they would file some, a bond with you. And the bond is this, if there's any problem with the pump station while it's being operated, while you're operating it, you don't own it yet, let's say, but you're operating it, if there's a problem with the pump station, you would tell them there's a problem with the pump station, they should then respond and fix it, because it's under warranty, it's under guaranteed, until you take it over, they're really responsible for it. If they came in a timely manner and they replaced the pump, or they did whatever needs to be done, fine, we just move on. If they don't, you need cash in hand to get it done, because you can't win on those things, they have to be done, you have people living there. We talked about that, and we've come, come to a recommended amount here, it's up to you. There's, um, whereas, I, I can tell you some things about water lines, if I tell you that I think you should be, put a ductile iron, cast steel or ductile iron, cement line, water main in there, AWA Class C 600, that's what I'm really recommending from all my years of experience. When I tell you a dollar amount, it's my judgment, all right? It's not right or wrong, it's my judgment that this is a number. Uh, I'm trying to protect you, so I put enough money in there, and I'm not trying to bang the developer more than we need. So, I made a recommendation on that. So that's acceptance for operations with some money in hand for something that's wrong. But regardless of whether something goes wrong or not, you still need to operate the system, you need to have an operator go there every day, and they're not gonna do that much. They're probably gonna go to the wellhouses and just check them out, they're gonna go to the area where there's coronation, make sure that the bed is full, that the pumps are working, they'll log down a few numbers on hours of operation, maybe a few other facts, maybe tidy up a little bit. Uh, at the waste water pumps, uh, pump station, they'll go over and take a look at the bar screen, see if it needs to be cleaned, or if we have a commoner in this case, I don't recall now, make sure that that's functioning properly. Um, they'll listen to the pumps, maybe do a little reasing occasionally, and that's about it, because the system's brand new, and the, and the collection system and the distribution system really don't require that much. But still, that's a cost. When they have one house there, you're not gonna be getting a lot of revenue, not enough to run the system for a year, let's say. So, well, what I suggested in here is that the developer pays the minimum rate for twenty homes from day one, as soon as they start up. Um, they will also be paying for any lots that they filed on a capital cost, because if the lot gets filed, it gets taxed, and it's gonna be paying those capital charges. That would generate sufficient money, in my opinion, for the type of operation you need. Uh, if anything goes wrong, you're gonna tell the developer to fix it, you're gonna not have to do much more other than just go there on a regular basis. Now, if you start selling homes, this is, one of my recommendations is that you start with twenty that he pays, uh, for, at a basic minimum rate, and then every time he sells a house and somebody new comes on the roll, it goes down. So, if in the first year he sells twenty homes, then you're just billing those people their regular rates, that should be sufficient to maintain the system, and you'll have no further obligation. If it takes him three years to build those twenty homes and sell them, he's paying for the twenty homes, or whatever residual portion hasn't been sold for and is actually functioning for somebody else paying for it. Um, that's a little complicated, if any questions on that, I'd be happy to entertain it.
I'll give you a question real quick, so we stay on the same subject. So, in other words, you got twenty, fifteen homes are built and moved in, do you want the developer, Mr. Walker, and so forth, just have to pay for five, because the other five are coming from the people that are living there already?
Exactly, that's exactly the case.
Which is good.
And then there's the final acceptance.
And, and the rate that these new people will be paying is the same, exactly the same as what the people are paying out in Hamiltonian Park now?
Correct. Uh, yes, they'll be paying the same rate as Hamiltonian Park, and it's, although...
I'll do it with the newspaper.
Although I've calculated the amount for the developer at the minimum rate, which, because he's not gonna be using any water, we did it at the minimum rate, the people that purchase a home will most likely be paying a little bit more than that. And if they're paying a little bit more than that, you will be more than offset, because you'll have whatever residual amount, maybe five homes at the minimum, and fifteen homes at a little higher rate, and then so, and you'll have more flow then too, so you'll probably have more work to do. Uh, that's all during construction. Then, uh, at the completion of construction, when all of the infrastructure and the roads and the water and sewers complete, all the phases are developed, um, you may not have all the lots developed, but when you have all the infrastructure complete, at that point, uh, there would be a final completion, they would enter a request to you for acceptance. Basically, usually at that time, uh, the Town Engineer and the Water and Sewer Superintendent's appropriate, would go out, do an inspection, file a report on completion, generally it's a punch list, we deal directly with the developer. At the point when they're done, we would make a recommendation to you that's ready for takeover. At that point, there are a number of things that happen, there's a transfer that takes place, there's a, a maintenance bond, there's a release of performance bonds, there's a number of things that happen at that point. Uh, that would be sometime down the road, and if they're very successful, that may be in three or four years. Um, and the only other thing is, uh, there are other costs that are occurred, that are approved by the developer, actually, whoever owns the lots. Uh, as soon as the map is filed, they're gonna file the phases, their first phase has forty-two lots, and those lots, when they get filed, they would be charged the capital charge for whatever capital improvements. Um, if there are no new improvements, they would go into the same pool as your Hamiltonian residents, and quite frankly, there would be a reduction in the amount that the Hamiltonian residents are paying, because there's forty-two new lots, they would be sharing that cost. If sometime now or in the future, you incur additional capital costs, they would be spread across the new property owners, and they would all be paying, and that's, that's what we talked about in the hearings.
And Dennis, uh, obviously there are bonds that are being posted when he goes through the planning process...
Yes.
...for the rest of the infrastructure and so on and so forth, those are separate items. The bond that we're talking about now is for the, just the water, the sewer portion, that's what we're relating to.
Yes, there are different bonds, there are performance bonds...
Right.
There are, uh, highway, uh, road opening permit bonds...
Right.
...when they construct the long Old Chester Road. They'll, they'll have to post a bond for that, because that's your own road, and they're gonna be cutting it up.
Right.
Uh, there are a number of things, but yes, this is a separate bond issue, strictly for water and sewer.
Now, will the infrastructure for all the lots on the subdivision map and all the phases be completed initially? Or are we talking about completing the infrastructure, getting water and whatever to the first phase of twenty?
I think, actually, the first phase, I think it's forty-two units.
Or forty-two, whatever.
Uh, we're only collecting for twenty, uh, operations, just to cover the number, but they will need to build that infrastructure as a minimum, all right, to support all of those units there. The others, if they don't create out the roads and they don't do all that work over there, they don't need that to supply water adequately and, uh, and provide a collection system for sewage, uh, in those other areas. They're gonna find out that they're gonna have to work somewhat into the other phases. For example, remember when we eliminated the pump station?
Yeah.
When we eliminated that pump station, there may be a pipe that needs to run down that would be part of maybe one of the other phases as well. I'm not sure, I have to look back at that, but they will need to provide all of the infrastructure necessary to support that phase. And the way we look at phasing plans is, the phasing plans, in my opinion generally, are driven by the developers. We don't really, and, and I'm telling you like you're planning for, that's what I tell a planning board.
Okay.
That, that phasing plans are driven by developers, it's market-driven, it's, it's up to them. The only thing we look at a phasing plan for is if that's the only phase that's ever built and they never come back, can it function on its own?
Right.
And that's the way we look at the phasing, and that's the way I would look at the infrastructure for that phase one development. If phase one is only built and that's the only thing you have, you've got a viable project, you've got a viable infrastructure system that can function. If they go to phase two and they add it to it, phase one and phase two must be similarly able to function on their own. And then phase three, you only have three phases, and then three phases, and three phases would build it out.
Well, the pump station, whatever your, equipment you're putting in now is, should, is, is gonna be big enough to handle the four subdivisions.
Yes.
However, if they only build one phase, then just those people in that first phase are gonna be paying for, uh, we have the situation in, in the village with the sewer. So, I just didn't know if all the infrastructure was done, or, or are, are we gonna be faced with anything, just in case they sell their phase one and say, you know what, we're not gonna do this anymore, it doesn't make any sense, and walk away, and we have a $10,000 bond, or, or that's what was recommended here from twenty-five, we thought it was not enough for twenty-five, maybe, maybe it is. However, we might have to complete some things, and of course, that all goes back to the district, to those people in the first phase. So, I just wanna make sure that everybody's protected, including the developer.
I think that, um, as far as the pumps go and that sort of thing, that you need to build the pump station, uh, for the full building. It's not that, it's not dramatic as it is for the village or the Sewer Street plant in terms of gallons and cost per gallon and that sort of thing. The difference between a pump that might produce twenty GPM and one that might produce forty GPM is not so dramatic as you might think, it's not, it's not the cost at all. So, uh, they would, they would put that in for right now, and, um, is it possible that only phase one will be built? Certainly, the developer doesn't expect to do that, but that happens.
Yes.
And we, uh, what we're trying to provide here is sufficient protection for you, that if that does happen, you still have protection.
Right.
And we're not gonna recommend that they get the first C.O., unless that infrastructure is built to a point where it can function...
Right.
...all, uh, as, as if it was going on forever.
Okay. If it were only a forty-two unit subdivision.
As if it were forty-two.
I'm saying, that's, that's what you're looking at, yeah. Under other costs, I'm on page nine, developer knows that in addition to the operating maintenance cost, capital cost for water will be assessed on a per lot basis beginning of the tax and status state, followed by inclusion of property into the water district by extension. Can you really, in a layman's term, explain to me what that really means?
Um, I'm not sure if I can break it up.
Page nine, it's under, at the top, other costs, I think I understand it, but...
Right. What that's saying is that when he files his map...
Right.
He's gonna be starting to be charged for, as if he's in the district. And so, he should be paying those capital charges for, um, whatever your capital charges are for the Hamiltonian district.
Okay. Well, I'm thinking out loud here, for example, that we replaced a line in, in Section A back in two thousand and seven, and there's a capital charge every month, or every, I'm sorry, every, every quarter for people for that. And, uh, it's a big number, but it's a number. Um, and, and I noticed you have the same thing for sewer, which capital charge there could be for working on I.I. And this year, for example, for Hamiltonian Park, we said we're gonna take, I think it's fifty thousand dollars, and go at it to start working to reduce the I.I. So, these are the kind of costs you're talking about?
Yes, uh, you have a thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cent per quarter charge for water main capital, I shared this with developer, they know what it is, they're gonna pay that for each unit. Now, it'll probably, it could go down...
Right.
Because there's more people sharing, it could go back up if you did something and now you have the capital expense. That fifty thousand, I'm not sure, there are some, gonna be some contributions from the developer, that actually won't be bonded, most likely, you'll be spending that money.
It will not be bonded.
But anything that you do bond, if that fifty thousand were bonded, then it would be in these costs and it would be shared by them as well.
I mean, what we've been trying to do for the last six years is pay cash, pay as we go or we don't go. We just replaced two pumps in the Hamiltonian Park sewer pumps, fifty thousand dollars bought and paid for. So, we don't, there's not two, other than that water line, I don't know of anything that we really owe on a bond. So, this is gonna, and what, the reason I'm bringing this up is gonna go up and down based on what breaks. And, um, okay, so, just so we clear the air and all that. Okay, thank you. Board, any other questions?
Well, I, I mean, I have one, thanks for the small, uh, Madison report, I still see on page six, that the, uh, uh...
Mike George, Jewish reconstruction... I'm concerned about the, uh, what, I don't know exactly what that means, but it has the, uh, number one there, uh, using the Jewish reconstruction, the synagogue of the North Shore Inc. versus Incorporated Village of Roswell Harbor, that to me, if this was developed by Mr. Sweeney, uh, tells me that this might be a problem for us, uh, to defend, and I think you, although you didn't know the chapter, line, or verse of everything about it, I think you agreed with me.
Yeah, it, it's a standard, if you notice the footnote applies in paragraph... You, uh, ten, about the, uh, seventh line, the sixth line down at the end, the payment based on the engineer as not being reasonable is meant by law. In the event there's a charge made to the applicant, developer, and they don't find it to be reasonable, that's the standard by which it would be determined whether a charge, which is a particular dispute, uh, was reasonable or rational. And the standards are set forth in that particular case, which is cited in the footnote. And it's my intention to give you a copy of that case, just so you're aware, it's, it's not terribly enlightening, but again, it is a standard. And I, I, you'll have a copy of that before you actually formally adopt it, just so you should better understand.
Well, rather, I mean, certainly, I'll, I'll accept the copy, but I, I, I just basically wanna know whether or not that weakens the town's position in, I, I have absolutely no problem with those folks getting a full explanation and an audit and everything like that, but if in fact this number one weakens our position in order to pay the bills that are appropriate, I would be opposed to it.
Yeah, I understand, uh, and I'll, I'll require you seeing the language, because again, by definition, not putting air to these words, but by definition, the mere fact that it's added weakens the town's position. I mean, we're, we're not the final arbiter, this is a standard by which it, it's gonna be meant.
So, I would say take it out, the rest.
Again, I think when you see it, uh, you may not have the same, uh, belief.
We got some...
Yeah, with no problem, do you wanna leave the first sentence and delete the rest of the paragraph, and delete, that takes out the, the reference at the bottom of the sentence, the first sentence, I think is clear, just everything's done.
Your code speaks to all that anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a similar... Section eighty-five talks about, uh, you know, charges...
Right, so, the, the first sentence and the balance of the paragraph is deleted, and...
Oh, including all, the rest of it all, all to the end where it says, uh, payment in full by farm, does that weigh funds?
Yeah.
Right to appeal? Take all that out.
Yeah, that's in your code.
Yeah, all the way.
When you, when you reference, uh, section eighty-five, that's the, you're, that's the section of the town code that it talks about.
Right, so when it says eighty-five C of the town, of, uh, Goson Code, period, that's it?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Well, that resolves that.
Well, it doesn't, you okay with that, Dennis?
I'm, I'm trying to determine exactly what we're taking out. We're, we're taking out the beginning of the second sentence, the beginning, farms shall have the right to expect...
All the way down to the end?
And, uh, you're leaving, you're also excluding all such protests shall be heard and resolved by the town board.
Right.
You're taking that out?
Why?
I don't know, I'm just saying.
No, I, no, I think this was, this was fostered by the developer, because they wanted a check and balance there.
I believe so.
So, we generally don't go through in a public meeting, an audit process of...
You are supposed to do that by your code, you don't do it, but you are supposed to do it.
Yeah, it's in the code, oh, I see, okay.
So, that's why, and that's section eighty-five received.
Right, but that's your point, that eighty-five C requires us to do that, so the rest of this would be moved.
Or, or submerged, yeah, redone, yeah.
The only thing I would request is that, you know, we have an opportunity to make sure that it's three C, that there's several sections that refers to all of this, and there may be a couple of sections that should be referenced, but it's section eighty-five, I know that, but I don't recall whether...
No, let's just back off and just look at this thing first.
No, let's just back off and just look at this thing first, look at the whole thing and then...
Yeah, we can certainly check that.
We got to minor point and I don't think it's, but we want to make sure it's right.
I have another question now for the other Dennis, and it's, I guess, my lack of engineering ability. I still don't grasp how this subdivision has a single line to the stand pipe and then comes back, I think, with the same line to the subdivision and feeds those new homes. I thought like water went one way.
No.
I'm wondering about this.
It does. Well, water's going one way, okay? But it depends where the demand is, all right? If they have wells, they're pumping into, just think about this, where you have a well down here, even right now, it's the same way. You have wells in Hamiltonian Park. They pump into the distribution system. The distribution system then distributes around, that's why it's called distribution system, around all your roads. And then a pipe eventually goes up and arrives to a tank where there's storage. And then the water in the tank either falls or rises depending upon the demand in the system. If you have more demand than you can pump, you're going to pull a little water out of storage. So water's coming out of the water storage tank into the system and it's also being pumped into the system. At night, for example. Hardly anyone will use it and it'll raise into the tank and raise the tank up to its full level. It's overboard. This is the same principle over Hamiltonian Park. They're going to have wells over there. Those wells could be off. If the wells are off and you have wells pumping in the Hamiltonian district, it'll go out and go through the 12-inch main over and supply those homes. You could have your Hamiltonian wells off and you could have just the wells in heritage on. They could be pumping in, supplying the little demand that there is over in the distribution system, over in heritage, continue on down Old Chester Road, go through the bridle path, come in, go through the distribution system and they may still have extra water and still continue to fill the tank. So that's how most distribution systems are set. With a distribution grid in the middle, well pumps or a treatment plant off of a river supplying water and a balancing reservoir at some high elevation.
So it could be coming out of the well going directly to the house if the house is right there.
Right, right.
Wherever it's needed, coming out of that well is where that water is distributed.
Yes. And there are occasions when all the wells are off and all the water comes in storage. At night, for example, where water might come from storage. So I hope that's a good explanation. If it is, I'll throw some applause. I love doing that.
Well, I understand. It's much better. The only other thing is, is I, you know, my name, I was always kind of told, don't have dead ends. Dead ends, it's hard to keep forward residual.
Well, you're right.
Is there dead ends with this?
This is a long run that doesn't have a loop system yet, okay? You're right. Whoever gave you the advice, don't have dead ends. I like the engineer, okay? That's not what you want to have in these systems. You want to loop systems, which means that if you have a pipeline, you want to loop it around some other way so it gets fed in two directions. That way, if you have interruption, break, you can valve it off and everyone still continues to get their water. In this particular case, because of the fact where Hamiltonian is and where this is, you don't have the benefit of that yet. However, we talked about this. You have Maplewood, which will come before you on the other side, and then there may be opportunities to loop around and to tie this all together. And the only way this works, the only way it's going to work here because of the way your, the nature of your development, is to do it in patterns. And there is, I mean, a grand plan to try to loop all this together. And once we can get that done, you'll have a much stronger water system. But there's really not a way to do that now unless you ran two lines down Old Chester and that would be very expensive and very difficult for this. I have systems that function in this way and we're always looking for opportunities to loop the lines. And many of the systems that I built years and years ago in the 70s and the 80s had this and now they've become looped further. Suffering was one. In NIAC, we've done other work like that where we've gotten the opportunity along the way to loop the things together. And it's a very strong distribution system and grid now. I'm hoping you'll, as the town in Goshen develops, will get that same opportunity.
So that's where Maplewood and others come in. We'll be able to do that in the future. Any other, that's a good question. Any other question?
Well, I mean, I probably have one question, but I haven't had an opportunity to review it.
Right, right. Which brings up my next question, Dennis. You know, we have, I invented here all of those documents that we still have not seen all of them.
Correct.
Where and when are we going to see all of this and...
Yeah, I had hoped, we talked Monday night to have them to you, but this turnover agreement is the most important one. And now that you have that, like George just pointed out, you can certainly digest it. And it's my belief that you're probably in a situation where you could address it at your next meeting set. And between now and then, these other documents, including the closing legal descriptions on the easements will be submitted to you.
Now, in our next meeting, we have another subdivision thing we're going to be talking about.
Maplewood.
Maplewood. And then there's still another one with McEwen property.
Okay.
The tanks getting full. I just want to make sure that we, we get this...
So we're in a position now, if you get by the turnover agreement, that the documents, literally, the package is complete.
As I mentioned to you on the phone today, and for the benefit of the board, you need to give the same answer. I had two questions. One is, the hookup fee for the village, how will that be managed? And then the other one is, in the event that this property is sold, is there something in the turnover agreement that in fact, the money's...
Yeah, just to address, well, the village hookups will be accomplished by, basically the village per their resolutions they adopted. We can go Monday. And I haven't spoken to Jim Sweeney about this, but the norm is there would be a catch-all provision or paragraph added to the turnover agreement, which basically recites that this is binding on any and all successors there who are assigned of the instrument.
Should run with the land, shouldn't it?
Right, it would run with the...
The subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Okay, I did get a email from Sean. I'd asked him that question about the easements. And he said all the smaller easements have been satisfactory. But the open space conservation easement had a few errors and they spoke to PMP yesterday and they were going to sort them out. So that should be resolved. So I think we'll have a little easement.
Yeah, it's a housekeeping detail.
Your one next meeting's on the 11th of June. Mike?
Yeah, just a question. Did the right-of-way abandonment agreement, did you have sent that over to...
No problem. They accepted. Yep, good, yeah.
Yeah, so as a practical matter, other than dotting the i's and crossing the t's, the turnover agreement and then everything can be put together with, again, Mr. Hoffman's comments and for the submission from Peter Zachenfau, and it'll be in completed form so that you could, again, if acceptable, and I assume it will be, you can act.
And the planning board, any outstanding issues or where are we with those? Are they ready to sign the map?
Yeah, the planning board has signed off on all this.
They have.
Yeah, the documents which you have seen before, they signed off on, with the exception of the attached escapeaways, if you will, the technical descriptions.
Right. We still have other conditions. We're working through with that.
That was my question.
Right. They have obligations before the town board, which they're trying to resolve here. And they also have some obligations with, and they have to solve them all. So they're here for you for those items that are your responsibility and they have some other things they have to finish.
I understand, but what I'm really asking is where are we as far as you putting a stick in the ground?
Well, we need to, we need to get our plans revised and back to the Orange County Health Department. So once this water system issue is resolved and approved and we can move forward, we'll get the plans to them, then they can review and approve the interconnection between the developments, the changes that we got to make on site, removing the tanks, some pump changes, things that Dennis had requested.
You going to start building this year?
We want to build as soon as we can, as soon as we can get all those permits in place. We're trying to expedite everything. We got team, we got PMP.
Okay.
We want to go.
Yeah, okay, good.
So the applicant, from your perspective, everything you hear, you have, basically you're in agreement with it. I mean, it is written.
Yeah, the one thing here that we haven't talked about is the actual expansion of the district, which on your end, there's going to be things that have to be filed. So, but you know, I think that's something that has to be done rather quickly so that that paperwork can be done and go to the AG's office, et cetera.
What Michael's speaking about now is the resolutions. As you know, we had public hearings. Public hearings were closed. There would have to be a joint or two separate resolutions for the water and sewer district expansion, which would be taken up at the same time as these instruments.
Okay.
I'd like to see if we can finish this, the week of the 11th, if not on that Monday, on that 30th.
Yeah. That was the intention. I said, the board, well, we'd be able to position it to it this week, but we just lost time.
Right. Well, it sounds like there's still some things to be done. So what I'd like to see is...
Be a minor, I don't want, you know...
But I'd like to see the documents kind of come in one at a time. We'll get it to all the board members for the meeting so they can, so we can...
Yeah, just want you to understand, there's no documents you haven't seen. They're not final.
I want to...
Okay.
I'm talking final documents. So this is it. So when we get into the meeting, it's, okay.
All right. But in fairness, because you just, I don't want to, you know, have the misimpression that the applicant hasn't cooperated. Sometimes the documents which you have refer to, for instance, a legal description, Schedule A. Schedule A, Dennis mentioned, pointed out, may be technically deficient in one or two clauses or lines. It's that type of thing which you do not have. You don't have the final product yet, which we're, I guess, my understanding is we're very close and happy. But that is, again, I want to emphasize, that's a tactical review unless you're a surveyor or an engineer. You can read it all day. You're not going to understand what it's about.
No, no. Just making sure. I can click it off. I look at all these, clicking them off. So as they come in, it's up, we got that, that, that. And the big plus of the 11th, well, we got it all. We can go in the meeting and do what we got.
That's the way it should be.
Okay.
And the most important is, as I say, one, Dennis alluded to tonight and discussed with you, it was the turnover.
Okay.
The other item on there is developer's agreement.
I know what that is. I know what a developer's agreement is. There was never a developer's agreement in this faculty. I think that was picked up probably from a planning board reference. And if you remember, this is morphed over time to where it's a joint document, water and sewer turnover. We're not dealing with transportation corporations. And it's been worked into the turnover agreement, the capital contributions which the developer is making for water and sewer. That's normally what would be in your developer's agreement. But there is no such set document.
So that one we can cross off because...
Correct.
Well, if that's the case, then I think that you probably, we've called this a turnover agreement all along, but I did notice that this has a lot more than just water and sewer.
It does.
So maybe this is the developer's agreement and we rename it. Because we don't need a turnover agreement. We need a developer's agreement, I think, which can embody within it all of those things. And you might want to do that. And then if there's any loose ends, they can always go right into developers. I don't know if there are, but they would go right into the developer's agreement because that's properly named, I think.
Right. We'll just rename it.
Fine. You can rename it.
Dennis, one of the things, just for my review again.
Just get it done.
The red changes, who, who were the red changes?
The blue changes were an original, or an initial modification done pursuant to conversations I had with their attorney, Jim Sweeney. The purple or red changes, whichever color you may have, are the changes which Dennis, Lindsay and Riddick Associates added addressing the mechanics and the engineering issues.
Whatever color it is, it's in the back. We see the extensive area where it's all color change. That's what we need. The color that is in the back.
Correct.
Okay.
Blue. Then it's blue, Dennis, you're red.
That's it.
But see, that's interesting. What I'm interested is mine, Dennis Lindsay is blue and, I'm sorry, I'm blue and Dennis Lindsay is purple.
Giving out a break.
Yeah, that's actually...
Let's debate that. Okay.
It's more my stupid, the original.
This is not how it should go, fellas. The engineer and the attorney should not be so...
Dennis, I've already told the Maplewood they can be at 7:30 on the 11th. So this is going to be second. I don't know how long Maplewood's going to be there.
Hard to say.
And we also have the McEwen property on that night. So this is going to be a full agenda, so.
The 11th is your next first, your work session meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Have I seen anything on the Maplewood property?
No, it's coming brand new. No, you haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, you're going to have a lengthy meeting.
I'm scheduling in advance and so I can share it with...
What's coming? Maybe we shouldn't have it that late.
No, no. I told them they can have it because they wanted to do it. They wanted to do it this week and I said, no, I put them off until the 11th.
So what did they want to do?
I don't know.
They've been ready for some time.
They just might come and say... I don't know. They said they want to talk to me. I said, you don't talk to me, you talk to the board. So they're coming in to talk about stuff.
Oh, that's okay. They haven't been to the planning board or anything, have they?
Don't think so.
I think it's actually, it's probably...
Or what they want to do.
Okay.
No, that's, that's deeper.
Touches.
No.
Just sharing with you that Maplewood would be longer, Maplewood would be longer because we've met with them.
Yeah, just so you're aware, just talking to Walker, Mr. President, you know, they calculate, and I didn't count these up, there's 17 documents you have to approve in addition to the resolutions and instruments I'm going to be generating. So call it approximately 20 instruments in a package, which you will have to approve, either in total or individually.
How can that be? 20 instruments?
That needs, that needs the town board's approval?
Acknowledgement and acceptance.
You know, there's some of them later on, for example, you know, our dedication of, you know, our proposal of A, B and C.
Right.
The language of that, of that irrevocable offer dedication that's been reviewed by the planning board attorney.
Right.
Is a condition of our subdivision approval requires you guys to approve it also. So you're not going, we're not going to execute that, but it takes an approval. You know, there's the declaration of open space conservation easements, parcel A. There's the dedication of agriculture, or the agricultural easement, which is over at Cold Farm, that requires your execution. Irrevocable offer dedication for open space B, that's the one in choice of park. We have open space parcel B.
It's ready to go.
Open space parcel B, that's the one. Then we have our road, we have a road widening offer dedication on the old road, on the turn there. So if there's any future improvements. We're also offering a strip of land, the easement or the right-of-way along Old Chester Road. Typically, you want to have a standard 25-foot off center line. It kind of varies. So there's...
We have to accept that dedication. Okay, all right. Well, you know what?
We have easements over all of the detention basins or storm, or storm management facilities that are going to be offered to the town. There's probably three or four of those.
But can they, can they be done without the easement? I mean, you can just, you can feed those two of us, right?
Yeah, they're all, they're all done, submitted.
Okay.
I think what we need is a list of these that we can click off.
And we'll just click them off.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We'll just...
Dennis agrees with it. Send it on.
Yeah, just send it on.
Yeah. And added to that are our resolutions expanding the districts on the sewer. Because they need the entire package approved so they can do it with the state and county agencies.
Well, what if we can pre-do on an ongoing basis, we want to get, I mean, we just want to hold you up.
The key, the two, the key things for us is the turnover agreement, well, I should say the...
Developments.
Because that concludes, that we can now go to final design and plan for renovation or revisions so we can go back to the health department.
With the new plans available?
Right. And we can also tell everybody, the regulatory agencies that were in, you know, sewer district or water district, number one in the town of Goshen.
Yes. I think the easement is very, very important as well.
Yeah.
You know, for us, we need, that was another big, I know George, two weeks ago, said, let's get as much of it at one time as we can, brother. Which I think is a good, good point. Do it all at best we can.
But if it can't be done, it can't be done.
Right. Okay. So I guess we got this one on the hook then.
Yeah, we did.
Folks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
This was the biggest part of the next investment.
The next item is approval of minutes, regular meeting, April 26, 2012, and work session, May 7, 2012. Does someone like to make a motion regarding these meetings?
Someone would.
Second.
Any corrections, additions to the meeting?
I have a couple here. On the, first on the 26, I'd like to give these beforehand, but I didn't get the opportunity tonight. On page five, there's a resume which was carried five to four. It should have been five to zero. There's a typo on page six. I guess a question for Dennis and I guess for maybe even the board, the one we were talking about, the right-of-way abandonment agreement between New York Farms and the town of Goshen.
Correct.
The whole thing is there. But we didn't act on it anyway, so should it be in the list?
We discussed it.
We discussed it.
We just haven't acted on it.
But we haven't...
But it has, it has the whole, the agreement made on this date, blah, blah, blah. But it has, it has the whole, the agreement made on this date, blah, 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 it's just like a resolution that we passed, that should be proposed and read.
Correct, and there was no, no action taken, I, I haven't seen the minutes.
So then there should be something in those minutes then, saying that no action was taken on this.
That, or the following was proposed, and no action was taken, or still awaiting action of whatever type.
Okay, that was on page seven, and there was a, I'll give this, there was a typo on page nine, and that was it, on page, on the, I have them all highlighted there, and on the seventh, actually, on the other one, Val, I think there was two places where it was five, four votes, instead of five to zero.
I can't, I don't know about the office.
Just a typo, and then, let me see here, was that, oh, there's a typo on page five, oh, I'm sorry, it's this one, there's a five, four in this one, and this should be five, zero, on the last page, page seven.
Okay, that was...
So there's one each, that's five, four, that should be five, zero, that's my changes.
All right, and sort of like, motion then, please, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. On your new business, reviewing, okay, this, Dennis, you want to go through this, review and approve the resolution to extend the negotiated stipulation agreement upon, agreed upon with Maplewood subdivision?
Yeah, as the board will remember...
Holiday weekend, no doubt, no doubt.
Previously, we resolved the item of litigation with ADC Orange, Inc., which is the developer of the Maplewood project, and the substance of that stipulation of settlement and discontinuance, which has been amended twice, was that Maplewood would proceed before the planning board with their application for development of that property, in basically those three phases, one was to be a high-density senior citizens, or aged, established project, townhouses, planned to own, two, a number, some single-family homes directly across from the entrance to Hamilton Park, and then another block of homes along Coldman Road, part of that agreement allowed them time within which to process their applications with our board for finality or approval, and if for whatever reason, they did not, and or were not satisfied with the affirmative action taken by our boards, they would have the right to re-initiate the suit, that time period expires June 11th of this year, they are obviously not in a position to complete their submissions to the planning board and receive all their approvals, so basically they need and want and have requested a one-year extension from the June 11, 2012 date, to June 11, 2013, within which to comply with the original terms of stipulation.
If we give them the stipulation, can we have the, their right to file suit removed? Because...
No, that's the whole purpose of the stipulation.
No, I understand, on their side, but at this particular point, we gave them the time.
Right.
And they just didn't get what they said they were going to get done, so they're...
No, 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 that's not right.
Okay.
Okay, so you understand, that was the concept, but they have not received from the planning board the approvals for the project, regardless of whether, you know, they didn't pursue them...
I said, we don't know whose fault it was.
Right, right, no, I'm not saying anybody's fault.
If it was theirs, then we lived up to our whole agreement.
Well, if it was, but...
I have no problem, I have no problem.
Okay, yeah, right, but you've got to agree on this point, though, even if they lived up to theirs, if they didn't find it satisfactory, they could just walk to re-initiate the suit, well, that, that's just like the sword of the impletes, if you will, about this sabotage, they were happy, as you saw the other night, Monday night, I guess they were in, they were happy with the procedures at present time, they've got them all ironed out, they've met with Dennis, they're on a template identical to Heritage, and it's just that the time is up.
Yeah, but they, Mr. Garrett asked that evening, that we make mention the fact in this resolution, that we're open to, or the, the concept of creating, extending Hamilton Park Water and Sewer District, is being part of this document?
And we talked about separating that...
Well, you mentioned that, but I think, but, but we never resolved that, I mean, my feeling is, if he asked for it, why shouldn't we put it in?
Oh, I would, I would, again, I honestly don't recall, but if he asked for it, even more importantly, I think that's the town's position, we would want that as part of the resolution.
That's what I'm saying, you know, because this, to me, it's a home run for them and them.
Absolutely.
Will he be bound by that, though?
Uh, he would.
Okay.
Uh, I'm looking for my resolution now.
I just don't want us to unilaterally be bound by something that we're adding to that.
We didn't get the okay...
No, this is conceptual, this was just conceptual, depend, you know, it's got to be written such that we're not locked in a corner, so...
Yeah, well, that's why I said two separate agreements.
But they asked for it, I think it's appropriate we at least discuss it, but I mean, I, I don't see any negative, I mean, if it's one or two, it doesn't make any difference to me, as long as it's, we have a, a document that says, yes, we discussed it, and they can, the concept, we agreed to it.
Right, see, what was throwing me is the attorney name you mentioned, he, he wasn't here.
Or the guy, the owner?
Oh, yeah, Garrett, okay, yeah, we haven't seen the attorney in a couple of years.
No, I'm talking about Mr. Garrett.
Yeah, Garrett.
He said we're going to pass his resolution, and he asked if that could be included, because the reason why they came here that evening, was they want a clarification from us, that we're, our willingness, this is what we're going to do, and they've agreed with it.
Correct, yeah, if, if that's the case, this, this resolution you have before you is just to extend or amend the existing stipulation, does not reference that.
So we can do another resolution referencing that?
I can even dictate that to you tonight, if something's wrong.
Let's do that.
Yeah, no problem.
So we're going to accept this as it is, you can do another one, that you're going to dictate?
That's what I would recommend.
Yes, now, before, before you actually go on to that, Dennis, one thing rings in my ears, that is, once you say you are going to create a water and a sewer district, you are bound to provide the water and sewer district, so what happens if the village, for whatever reason, says, no way, we're not going to do it?
Right.
Now we're going to be bound in some way, shape, or form, to supply them with water and sewer, and I'd be concerned about that.
Yeah, you, we do not do it on our own, you're going to do it by petition, which petition we don't have, think back to Heritage.
We, we agree, a concept that we discussed, and this is just to codify that evening, that we had a mutual agreement, this is the road we want to go down.
Right, and then make it in terms of...
It's got to be written in such a fashion, it doesn't, it doesn't have war.
My, my whole reasoning is that we have an agreement in its entirety, that we're extending, we are not extending with revisions, we have an agreement, let's stick to that agreement, and then make it separate, on the other, that's why I said, because once it's part of this agreement, it's part of this agreement, it could be really right.
Well, let's go ahead, we'll pass this one then, okay, let me ask a question, I think we need a resolution on the other. Well, I think so, only in that, you know, this is a big deal to them, I mean, we, we dictated this to them, and they bought in on it, and I'd like, again, complications, they've accepted that, so that six, or eight, 10 months from now, they say, oh, you know, we've been getting some more thought, we want to go directly to the deal.
You've got to understand, it's somewhat self-serving, because it's our resolution, they're not part of the resolution, we would just be historically referencing what our agreement or understanding was, they could either pursue it or not, as the case may be.
They asked for it, Dennis.
Right, and we can't bind them.
No, 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 I'm saying, that evening, it was brought up, it was brought up by them, can, could this be part of the resolution, we didn't say yes or no, okay, I thought tonight it would be discussed on this, it's not, okay, so that's something we can do on the 11th, I mean, maybe it's something, I mean...
Yeah, it may be better addressed on the 11th, for this reason, I mean, make sure we're calling up same thing, this document, the resolution you have before you tonight, must be adopted...
We agree.
Before June 11, and back in court, in the stipulation.
We understand that.
Separate and distinct, based upon the meeting we had with them Monday night, the developer is interested in having us, just like Heritage, expand the districts, and include them in water and sewer, they would like to have that, so as to show to the village and the other state and county regulatory agencies, that that is the format by which they're going to proceed with this development.
Right.
But if you follow, it, it contemplates a number of documents, which they have to prepare and submit to the town, such as petitions to expand the district, or include their development in sewer and water district number one out there, just like Heritage went through, if you follow, we don't generate those concepts, we're directing them, we're a bit giving philosophical approval for the concept, because that's the way we want them to go, so this resolution would be more or less an expression of acknowledgement, that it's understood, the agreement between the parties, that the town requests in regards to this project, that sewer and water be handled as follows, and it's presumed that the applicant will prepare and submit a necessary petition, if all, so it's not binding in that.
But even in that, you've got to say that, based on approval from the village, because the water, the water, we can handle, we can, we can handle the water and say, make a definite statement, but we can't say it about the sewer. Unless there's a better way of doing it.
No.
I mean, I'm just, because I was kind of fearful all along, because I kept hearing through the grapevine, that they were going, they were going to try to go directly to the village.
That was a consideration.
And we, we talked that evening, no, 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 we want you to do extension, it's going to be, money's coming our direction, all these things.
Right, but not just for Heritage, but Heritage, okay.
But in concept.
Correct, because if they go to the village, our action is not a motion or resolution.
I understand that.
Okay.
It, it is just a document, that we had the discussion, they came here for the guidance, we gave it to them, and here's the, you know...
It's an expression, basically, of our philosophy and acceptance of their content.
Let's do that on the 11th, then.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be better off taking that at that time, because again, I, I know what you're talking of, and technically speaking, you might better be correct if you were...
I mean, we have the, we have the minutes of the meeting, I mean, I don't know, you know, but...
Right, but the minutes of the meeting, and I said, I don't want to mislead you, the minutes of the meeting, and what was done and discussed on Monday night, have no legal effect.
None of this is going to have... All right, what's going on with this then?
Guys have to go to bed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any...
Councilman Lyons, I mean.
In lieu, second, any, okay, any discussion? Madam clerk, play a roll code vote, please.
Supervisor Bloomfield.
Aye.
Councilman Capella.
Aye.
Councilman Lyons.
Aye.
Councilman Cantree.
Aye.
Councilman Newbold.
Aye.
Uh, Michael Carey, thank you very much.
Five, zero.
Okay, the next item, George, you want to talk about that?
We're almost there. We are now up to the CDDG.
No, the acceptance resolution of Sherlock's resignation.
A resignation, okay, Patricia Sherlock has been a longstanding member of the Joint Recreation, she was the chairperson for a good number of years, and unfortunately, we had a resignation, so Ms. Sherlock decided to take the position of the director, which she is now serving in, she was newly appointed by the JRC, so I told her that, you know, there's a procedure you have to follow, that you have to resign from that position officially, so that's what this letter here is, and I guess I'm making a motion to accept her resignation as the, from the commission.
Good. All payers say aye?
Aye.
No discussion?
We, we'd like to send her a letter of appreciation.
Well, she's still...
Well, for that position that she was in, while she's going to be a paid employee, and have to go through the process, right?
Tell you what, George, you and I can sit down, probably draft something in that, I normally do this when people, uh, are employees, anyway.
And as I said before, we are now looking for a volunteer who would like to serve on the Joint Recreation Commission, who isn't ever out there.
Right, the next one's yours as well.
Okay, we, I think, talked a little bit about this on Monday, so we've done some work on this, I actually have not received word back from Joanne Vazino, she was going to check with her, but she's the one that kind of pushed this along, so I think she has kind of an inside line, you didn't have any more, I don't know, so what we are attempting to do here is, due to the economy and a lot of other different reasons, we have people that are in the town, in the village, who would like to send their sons and daughters to the JRC camp, which is roughly $90 a week, so we have students whose parents are unemployed or a number of different reasons, and so what we would like to do here is provide scholarship or tuition assistance, so that these people who are low, moderate income can attend the camp, and my proposal is, there's a lot of paperwork that has to be done, is to ask the CDDG, the community development block grant people, for $8,000 to assist us in supplying tuition assistance, so that these low, moderate income kids can attend the JRC summer camp.
It's similar to make a motion to authorize joint rec in the, I guess the supervisor, to, forward an application, develop and forward an application to the Orange County for the community development block grant.
So, second.
Any discussion?
And as you said, this has to be in what date?
Four o'clock, by the 31st of May.
Correct.
And there's no exception.
Correct.
They stamp it in, and it's got to be in Middletown, so we'll have to hand clear it.
Correct, and Joanne said that, you know, if you don't have every single thing in it, it's still okay, you can turn it in, but, you know, we can't...
They have to have the basic application.
Right, right. Excellent.
Okay, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, that's a good one.
That's a great one.
That's, I guess for the audience, what this means is, we do have people in our community who cannot, let's say they have three children, it's $90 a week, they can't afford $270 a week, send their children to the summer camp that we put, so this money from the community development block grant would assist them in that. Okay, the next item is under finances, would someone like to make a motion to authorize the supervisor to pay manual accounts payable check runs as of 5/2/2012, amounting to $93,349.57, and manual accounts payable check run of 5/22/2012, amounting to $248,169.49, or 64 cents?
Second.
Any discussion? All payers say aye?
Aye.
So now we're ready at the end for privilege of the floor, anybody can say anything or question anything they'd like.
Would you like to go home?
I just want to, thank you, my name's Ed Bowen, Ole Missing Trail, I just want to take a minute to thank the board for taking a little extra time beginning of the meeting to make our introductions, so that the scouts from troop 62 had a clearer understanding of how the meeting was going to be run, and what each board member does, thanks very much.
You're quite welcome, that's our future leaders, we're our future leaders, and now, I would like to make a, a point also, you see this room is empty, the only time we see people here, which is highly unfortunate, is that there's a real hot contentious issue that would involve them, otherwise, we do a lot of work, and it's in the public, and it's on the, on the video, but it's one of the things that I would share with you all, as you grow up, and wherever you move to and live, participate by just sitting in the audience and ask a question, because it's your town, it's your money, and it's the same in the village, it's probably nationwide that way, if it's to be known.
Can I make another time?
Sure, please, yeah.
You're up for dinner today.
I don't know, I didn't have much dinner, I was in a rush.
You're very quiet.
Yeah, I don't know what's happening, anyway, I, I've had the opportunity, the supervisor's asked me to attend a couple of these Eagle Scout ceremonies, and they're really very, very well done, but what I wanted to mention to each one of you is, unfortunately, I was not an Eagle Scout, I got the first class, and those merit badges got in the way, and a lot of other things got in the way, but I would strongly encourage you to continue on and try and get that Eagle Scout, because that's really a great honor, and it really kind of sets the stage for a lot of things that will come in your adult life, so I'd like to see you, you know, push and try and get that if you possibly can.
Good, thank you, George.
Thank you for calling, we appreciate it.
I, I want to follow up, I want you to start to say, Doug, and, and thank these four gentlemen for being here tonight, come back, and come back often, you may be bored with, to some extent with, or maybe a great extent, with what is going on here tonight, but be aware that what was going on here tonight involves potentially millions of dollars over decades, many decades, it will have an effect when your children are old men and women, the things that were discussed here tonight will still be affecting this community... and monies that will be paid by you, if you stay here, by your parents, by your brothers and sisters and by your friends. This is all funded through taxes that we pay. It's a tragedy that the room is empty. It is empty, meeting after meeting. We live in a democracy, a democracy only works when people participate. That's why it's called participatory democracy. What happens in this room and a similar room in the village has consequence. And it has consequence over time. The consequences are social, they are financial, they're economic. What happened here tonight is important, what happens here every time this body meets is important. Neil and myself do this simply as interested citizens, we're not paid to be here recording this. We're doing this as a service to the community, which by the way, if you have any interest, you're welcome to participate, come with a camera and record these.
Neil took care of that before you got here.
But what happens here tonight is important, what happens here every night is important.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel, I agree with you.
I had a question with regard to a couple of things that came up tonight. The community block, the community development block grants, CDVG. The distribution on that is determined by the grant or by how the town chooses to distribute it?
Well, we will apply for the money based on, George looked, he needs about eight thousand dollars to do what he wants to do.
So the amount of subsidy is determined by the town?
We will apply to the county who oversees this federal money.
That's not what I'm asking.
No, no, they're going to give us the money. Then his organization's going to have to figure out the system to administer that money.
So the amount of subsidy per individual is determined by Joint Rec?
Yes.
And how much is that currently set to be?
Well, what happens is, we have a subcommittee off the JRC and there's going to be an application that the parents are going to fill out. And then we will review that application and conceivably it could be.
So it's based on need?
Seven weeks, oh, yeah, no.
No, I mean, it varies by need.
No, it, let's say a kid, for instance, they qualify because they are free or reduced lunch. That's one of the big criteria through the school district. There's questions that they have to fill out, may have to sign, we have to have the application in the office. So now Johnny Jones comes up and he wants to attend, he qualifies now, because he's low moderate income in the family. And he wants to attend three weeks. Three weeks would be two hundred and seventy bucks, right? He would be issued, okay, you can come, and then we reply to the CDVG for two hundred and seventy dollars.
So it would be a full subsidy per individual child attending, but it's not a partial subsidy.
No.
Another question, how do you arrive at eight thousand dollars? How did you arrive at eight thousand?
Well, I can answer that question more easily. Actually, I figure I need about five thousand, but I gave myself a cushion. Sorry. CDVG may like, give us eight thousand, they may give us five, they may give us nothing.
And conversely, I would assume at this point with the summer camp season coming up, you have a pretty good fix on what your need for subsidy is?
Actually, this grant is for the following year, so we can't even use it this year.
Just as an aside, that might be a scout project to raise funds to assist others in the community who can't.
Do it again.
Might be a good scout project. The other thing that I wanted to ask about was on the, you mentioned there were two hundred and sixty-eight challenges or grievances. Were those appearances at the grievance board or were those applications in the box?
No, they're applica, well, both. There were about ten who came to the meeting, the ballots were in the box.
That's a low turnout at the meeting.
Maybe ten at each one, I don't know, but it was not very high. It's normally not real high.
So it was less than three hundred total grievances for the year? Good.
All right.
And I always want to make a clarification, just to point out that why we had less than three hundred, I believe, is the board knows. You've settled and resolved upwards of certainly high-level figures on those tax certs, which means there's a three-year freeze on the assessment, both for the town and for the applicant. So a lot of them have been eliminated.
But the reason why, pardon me, the reason why it was higher this year than we anticipated when we were doing this redesign computer system for doing the assessing and it was set out, then we were looking at it, saying, there's too many questions. That got the people in this business busy trying, they were using that to solicit work. And so that's why it's worth that, otherwise, we would probably be at even much.
Even less.
Okay, very good point. Neil?
Yeah, I'd just like to touch upon something that was discussed at the work session meeting, the Times Herald Record story and the writer's name is Sullivan. I'd just like to remind the board that oftentimes it's not the writer's fault that a story might not come to fruition the way you'd like it to. And I think one needs to acknowledge the culture of the Times Herald Record and the Rupert Murdoch newspaper empire. And I think they've got this reporter probably spread pretty thin. I know he's driving all the way up here from Mawa, I'm sure they don't pay him very well.
And you still can report the facts.
Yes, but, but he has an editor over him, you know, he has a supervisory staff. And the culture of the Times Herald Record is such that it should, it shouldn't let that sort of stuff happen.
It's used for a paper misreporting.
I agree.
I don't care, there is no explanation or justification.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not playing an apologist for him.
I understand.
I'm just saying that the paper in Total is to blame.
Absolutely.
You know, you can't just blame the writer, he's working for an establishment.
You know what? Well, the thing is.
In my opinion, he should have connected the dots appropriately, but consider, consider who he's working for.
Well, a reporter that allows his facts to be misreported and has his name on it, should leave that paper. I would never stay with a company if I did something and they changed it and told me to change it and it was not factual. So there's just, that's an ethical problem.
Okay, but also.
You'll hear the rest of the story.
Another quick note, I don't know if you know who Jello Biafra is, but he would, he would tell you, don't hate the media, become the media. It's easier now than it's ever been and, case in point, the Arab Spring, the Middle East. That was all guerrilla journalism. That was just people going out with their little thirty-five, forty-dollar cameras and going out in the street and videotaping it and uploading it on the world wide web.
But I think for the audience, what happened here is, we had an issue and the Times Herald Record did an article on it and then the Chronicle did an article on it and the Chronicle came in and spent time going through the files to determine the answers, and the facts. And they came out with a totally different conclusion than what the Times Herald Record did, but. Presents what's really going on. So that's what this issue was about. And so on our work session, I brought that up, you know, everything being equal, we all have responsibility to do the best we can to provide information.
Tell the truth.
And to tell the truth as you know it, but I mean, if I'm in my office and people come in and I just blow them off and give them some information that aren't right, then I ought to be looking for another job. And, but if I really don't know the answer, so how am I going to get it? Dig it out and I give you the writing, so that's what that was all about.
If I can just throw in, in opposition to my colleague here, I would also like to point out that all anybody needs to do is go to the extensive archive of the videos of the meeting. Go to the videotape, it's all there on record.
Sure.
And they know it is. Before you go into adjournment.
You'll remember the case.
Let me, let me just quickly slip in here, your air conditioning system is.
Very good, thank you, Dennis. Would someone like to make a motion, we adjourn the meeting, we go into the.